What's up ladies and gentlemen, it is another Monday, which means it's another addition of Stick to the Plan Podcast. My name is Kevin, I'm here with Russ and our special guest, I'll pull them up right now, whoopsies, there we go.
Hi Kevin, how you doing today?
Not too bad, how are you pops?
It's another Monday, I'm looking at, let me see, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna be like that host of the His Home Jackson Podcast where the microphone's in my face.
He likes to eat it, he does like to eat it.
I'm gonna go like this, cuz we've got that new setting going on here today.
Yes.
I don't know, what am I doing wrong?
I don't know, figure it out.
Anyways, we're here today with a guest, my old friend Caleb Wonkey, he is a candidate for city council of the city, city of Jackson, Ward 3, and I'm still messing with that. Yeah, I don't know, I'm still trying to adjust to that.
You just keep going.
Looks like a real podcast, don't it? A bunch of sticks in the way and stuff. But uh, oh look at that, that's what Kevin gets paid the big dollars for. No, if you look on there, the whole, the whole thing is in the way.
Okay, well then, do this.
That is great entertainment value right there.
There you go.
Yeah, we're gonna live with this.
Yeah, we're gonna deal with that.
We're gonna live with this. How's that? How's that right there? Uh, can you hear me Kevin?
That's what I'm checking right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're doing good now, you're good, you're good.
So anyways, like I always say, Mondays come around awful fast, but I have been ahead of the game Kevin.
I know, this is what, three weeks in a row?
Yeah, Amber, right?
Amber.
Kevin Kajuski.
Kiewski.
Did we figure that name out?
Kiewski.
Kiewski.
I wrote it down.
And now Caleb, and then I had.
And now, then next week, we're screwed.
No, I already was thinking about some, oh, I'm gonna try to get Megan Rayklin or somebody along that category to talk about rank, choice, voting.
Sounds good to me.
I'm gonna get ahold of our buddy Mark Forton.
Mark Forton is one of our biggest viewed episodes, I just saw yesterday, like 240 views.
I haven't checked on that. You know, Mark, Mark, Mark knows a lot of people, whether they love him or hate.
Hey, I love haters, hate watchers, hate views are still views.
But yeah, I'll have to double check on that.
Yeah, I'll double check the, I think it's 240.
That's MichiganMatters.org, right Kevin?
Yes, yes, or you can just go to MI Matters.org.
That's right, but not like I said the other day when I did.
Michigan MI Matters.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But we did that, that was take four.
Yeah.
Did that in four takes.
We did less than an hour.
And that is uh, the only, in take four, that was the only mistake I thought I had.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I messed up a couple of times with the board, but other than that, you, I mean, you, four takes wasn't bad for off the top of the head.
Yeah, and I'm not good at that all by myself thing.
No, it's different, it's a different ballgame.
I'd have, I gotta practice at that a little bit, I'm used to you or somebody to talk to on that, but speaking of that, so Saturday, I called you early, I got here in the studio and we put together a quick thing about the, and Caleb, you can chime in on this, we were just talking about it. I put together a quick thing on the No Kings protest that was happening around the nation and right here in Jackson at Withington Park downtown. And um, I popped on here real quick, uh, we, me, we made the decision, the sheriff brought it up. Hey, are you guys gonna have a counter protest? Not that he was saying not to.
Right.
He just wanted to know, and I go, no, we're not gonna do that.
Right.
And my thought was, the Jackson GOP wasn't going to uh, give him any oxygen and not put any relevance in it.
And Russ, if I remember right, I think some of them were even planning on going to DC, some of the GOP were planning to go to DC to actually see the Air Force, or the military parade, I know there was some talk about.
I would've liked to go.
So I do know. To go and did have tickets to go to the parade.
I do know a half dozen people that were at the parade.
Okay.
Mark Forton.
statewide, I don't know of anybody here in Jackson.
Mark Forton, 262 views by the way.
Mark Forton is a rock star, huh?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt.
We should book him back on here.
I think, I think it's a good idea. You got some pressure there Caleb.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can live up to the ratings.
We'll see.
But uh, I know some, now uh, go back to the No Kings protest downtown. You know, I'm the chairman of the Jackson GOP, I can't stop a random Republican going down to the protest and doing whatever. But I told the sheriff that we weren't going to be there representing the Jackson GOP, I do know a couple that were down there, I think Jeannie Brown and Jimmy. And that's great, they went down there, took some pictures and minding their own business, but I am gonna give a shout out, shout out, to uh, Amador and his people of the Jack, Jackson County Democratic Party. They kept it, they kept it good.
Yeah.
No vandalism, no nothing, uh, get this.
I went down there and bailed out, cuz I'm like, this is kinda boring.
Go, yeah, Kevin loved it, it was boring. Um, you know, you're looking for a freak show down there.
A little bit, I mean, not for this show.
Now, they are, they are a colorful bunch.
Yeah.
Ever since.
They're not very friendly.
Oh really?
Nah, I tried to talk to a couple of people and they were just.
Did they know who you were?
No, I don't let anybody know who I am, that's part of the game.
They would've known who I am.
Yeah, I know, but I'm not you.
Probably Caleb.
Yeah, they've seen pictures of me.
They might know who I am, a few of them know who I am, I mean.
But I thought they would be a friendly bunch.
Not really, um, I mean, I had my, just my GoPro strapped to my chest and um, I didn't have a microphone, I was just using the cam, or the camera's microphone. So I wasn't shoving anybody's face, I was just like, I just wanted to see if, what people were down there for and if it matched up to what the No Kings protest was actually about. And no one wanted to talk to me, so I left.
So I.
I was tired.
My point is protesting, I don't, I might disagree with it.
I love the concept, yeah.
I love it, that's what you're supposed to do, that's what you're supposed to do, it's what America was built on.
Yeah.
Caleb, you and I were talking prior to the show, uh, Republicans do it in a different manner. I've been at, I forget how many Trump rallies, 5,000 people, 3,000 people, I don't know, uh, all get together and, and do our thing.
Yeah.
Uh, Republicans don't tend to protest a lot, we do Capitol steps, specific issues, things like that. We've had many Trump rallies at the corner of Cooper in East Washington over the summer, and that's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah.
I, I think it's great, it's our First Amendment rights and long as you don't tear things up, hurt people.
Yeah. Stay off the road.
I hope they do it again.
Yeah, I want them to, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I, so uh, no issues. Now, I was watching the news this morning, they're mostly concerned about Israel and Iran. Uh, Trump being at the G7 this week in Canada. So, but I hadn't heard, and I'm sure some cities were probably, something happened, but for the most part, I hear most of them are all peaceful.
Was it Wisconsin or Minnesota?
Well, that's a whole different issue, that's unrelated, it's related but unrelated to the Kings.
Oh, Salt Lake City.
What happened in Salt Lake?
Uh, there was uh, uh, there were gunshots, there was only one, I don't know if the guy died, but I know that one was critically injured.
Um, at a Kings rally?
Yeah, at a, at later in the evening, like eight o'clock.
Cuz I'm sure there was gunshots Saturday somewhere in the city of Jackson.
The one guy had a rifle and the guy that actually had the rifle and was arrested, he, he actually got shot by a citizen, I believe, like a gun carrying, law abiding citizen.
Salt Lake City is the most conservative city, or one of the most conservative cities in the US, if I'm not mistaken, that they are a very conservative state.
Uh, very high Mormon population.
Yeah, very high Mormons.
The Mormons?
Yeah, that's the Mormons, yeah, they typically vote conservative.
They don't dance, they don't drink, they don't.
And they wear wool underwear.
Do they? That sounds itchy.
They still do, and I'm not gonna check.
Sounds, sounds, sounds irritating.
I won't Google it.
Um, just to touch upon Minnesota, what happened.
That was in the morning too.
So you and I were recording my uh.
PSA.
Yeah, Publics.
PSA is a good one.
Saturday, and uh, one of the people in the, who was it? Somebody, hey, did you hear what happened in Minnesota? And I Googled it real quick and I said, oh my God, this ain't, this ain't good. This ain't good. And the way Governor Tim Walz came out, although after I reviewed what.
Tim, huh, Tim?
Yeah, after I reviewed what Tim Walz said, at first I thought he was pretty much blaming a Republican fanatic for that. It was the way the media.
Played it.
Played it. Uh, Tim Walz, he, he's been part of the biggest problem with rhetoric to stir up the base, which is dangerous. But in that regard, he, he, he responded to it relatively well. It's still, they caught, they caught the tater today Kevin.
I guess it was a 16 year old boy?
No, 57 year old man.
Well, I'm reading about something different.
So.
Three people, including an eight month infant, were killed, um.
Talking about Salt Lake City, we talking about Minnesota?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I.
I'm in Minnesota.
I typed in Salt Lake City, I'm sorry, you're talking about Minnesota, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, the only one who knows about Salt Lake City is you Kevin.
Well, apparently Caleb does.
I didn't even know about it till.
Oh, okay, well.
Breaking news, right, you're on Stick to the Plan Podcast.
Everywhere else apparently.
But uh, initial, I, I'm, we ain't gonna know nothing, matter of fact, I bet you we'd never find out altogether.
No, you won't.
Everything behind this, but it sounds like this guy was an, an appointed person in state government by Tim Walz.
Oh.
Sounds like he is a Democrat, somebody reported though that he was a Trump supporter.
Supposedly, he's voted for Trump.
I, I'm not certain how that works, but uh, apparently those two state lawmakers uh, broke ranks about funding immigrants anymore with their.
Illegal, illegal immigrant healthcare.
Illegal, thank you for clearing that up, uh, the Minnesota healthcare plan, uh, and the guy got mad.
Yep.
It's shocking, just shocking.
Yeah, they're calling it politically motivated, but it's not really saying how so, other than the two people that were shot were two Minnesota lawmakers and their spouses.
So, when you first read politically motivated, you think Republican against Democrat or Democrat against Republican, but politically motivated could be anything, like I'm mad at these state lawmakers cuz they voted this way, period. But when you read that, that's what I first read Kevin, I'm like, oh, they're painting a picture like.
As I'm reading further into it, it's, he got, the guy posed as a police officer.
So get this, I was reading on the X yesterday, he, he, uh, he owned a security company, not a very good or popular one. And um, you know, so I had to just throw on a security uniform in his vehicle already, looked kinda cop carish. But it sounds like he knocked on the door and killed these poor people. Crazy people, what, stop it right now, everybody stop.
Yeah, he, he was a prison police officer and it was, it was in the suburbs even, like it, early in the morning.
That's where state reps live, they don't.
Yeah, exactly, um, it, it shows, like he was part of, I just saw something, um, it's something with the government, like you said, um, discovered the, blah, 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 anyways. The reason that they're calling it political, uh, they're trying to push it as politically motivated is because that means with federal prosecutors, it can, they can consider it a death penalty sentence.
Okay.
So.
Well, they caught the tater this morning.
Yeah, that's what I just read.
Here's my thing, reports say.
Uh, he was Michigan Governor's Workforce Development Board, that's what he served on, Minnesota, Governor's Workforce Development Board, sorry.
So he goes and he kills the first two. They find out that he has other lawmakers on his list, I guess. They respond to another lawmaker's home, he's there, he'd already shot him. And there was a confrontation and a shootout, pew pew, uh, between this crazy guy and my impression at first was several cops, it could've been just a one or two cops going there, and somehow he got away. And it took until this morning to find him. Now Minnesota is a lot like Michigan, there's a lot of places to hide, but if you're in the suburbs of Minneapolis, uh, yeah, yeah, I don't, how do you, how do you hide from the cops?
I, I.
And he left on, he ran on foot.
Yeah, I'm reading through it.
How do you hide on foot for two or three days?
Uh, I, it's kinda like you said, um, you're never gonna find out a lot of the information, as I'm reading through it just real quick.
I'm smelling poo, check the bottom of your shoe.
Yeah, yep, yeah, no poo here, so there must be some poo going on here.
Terrible, 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 stop. I, I wanna point out that uh, uh, and it has nothing to do with this, but I, I'm on the Jackson Planning Commission and I sat in it, when you go to the Planning Commission, the members sit in the, in the county commissioners' chairs.
Okay.
Because it's, they're not there.
Right.
We sit there, and I usually sit, gosh, I think in Tony Bear's spot, someone was missing, I moved over one and uh, I noticed there's a panic button. Uh, county commissioners have a panic button.
Really?
So you wanna act a fool, they push that button.
Push the button.
But.
Oh.
I've never been to a county commissioner where the sheriff and his undersheriff weren't there.
Oh yeah.
I'm thinking you should not F A F O.
Right.
At a county commissioner.
Well, especially in the state where you never know who's gonna have guns.
So he threw this, the guy.
This is the, uh, when he knocked on the door, or apparently when he.
Would you open the door to that?
He looks like a cop, except he looks like.
Why are you calling me at two o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, exactly.
I'm like. With that stupid mask on, I think I wouldn't answer the door, other than I just woke up.
Yeah, it says, uh, suspect's wearing a, uh, wearing a mask and tactical gear, carrying a flashlight, officials found Vince Bolter, the suspected gunman, in the shooting.
Bring up the picture of, of him, the real picture of him, so that's.
That's the, that's victims here.
There he is.
What he really looks like.
That's him there.
So really, it's not that far off, except he has hair.
He went with the bald look.
That's definitely him in the latex, I mean, if you look up the latex and then look at him, that's, that's the same guy, they're not, he's not a patsy, he's.
Yeah, he just had a bald cap on now, look at it.
There, that's the real man.
There's a scary guy at the door.
It's a real nice house.
Oh, that's a nice place, Minnesota lawmakers make good money, huh?
Yeah, uh, I don't know who this guy, oh, that's where the guy that found him, shares the details about his arrest, anyway, it doesn't matter, yeah, yeah, we're, we're not sticking to the plan very well.
No, it's just terrible, 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 uh, you know what, situations like this have happened forever, uh, but it doesn't help, uh, and it seems like it's mostly from the left, of course, all three of us in the room would say that. That even their elected officials, uh, threat to democracy and um, Nazi crap, it needs to stop. Now, I am gonna tell you right now that people on the right say goofy stuff too.
They do.
And it needs to end.
It needs to stop.
It needs to end.
Yeah.
Um, somebody said, uh, for example, what, what was it? Oh, um, someone posted a picture of uh, of, of, of the downtown Kings protest, one of the signs, the only sign down there that bothered me is when they had 86, 47.
Yeah.
To me, that's horrible.
Yeah.
I've seen prior to the Kings protest, children carrying those signs.
Yeah, and I think a lot of times they use children unfortunately, just like uh, terrorist groups do, um, because children aren't going to be um, approached or, you know, assaulted or anything, but typically.
So there's a fine line, I might not agree with Caleb's religious belief. And, and I might totally hate it, um, and, and I'm sure Caleb is raising his children under his religious beliefs, and parents should have the right to do so.
Yeah.
And, and uh, parents should have the right to raise their children uh, next to a uh, a gun range and make, have their children shoot every day, that I'm sure appalls the left.
Right.
As a parent.
We grew up shooting, I mean.
Yeah, as a parent, you should have the right to raise your children the way.
I will say that not everyone should own a gun, because I know some irresponsible people that leave their guns around or just, you know, it's just.
Well, yeah.
Responsibility and there's a fine line there, you know, I don't think everyone should own a gun that is not a responsible adult. I mean, you know, with privilege comes responsibility, you understand that with, with driving.
Caleb, Caleb, whose job is it to determine if a person's responsible or not though? That's the problem.
If they have a record, if they have a record of carelessness with guns, then that's where.
Or, or mental illness.
In order to obtain.
Well, depends on how you define mental illness, but yeah.
Depending on how you obtained that record of carelessness with a gun, it could've been too late.
Yeah, then why did they have a gun in the first place?
I, I'm with you, right?
You understand where I'm coming from.
Yeah, 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 I see both sides.
Uh, some people probably should not be armed.
Yeah.
Where, where I concern myself is who's do, who is to determine that.
Whose job is that?
Is where the stick.
I personally like, you know, how you run like the sheriff's board and stuff like that, that makes sense to me, the law enforcement agencies, I honestly, I'm okay with that.
If it was just the sheriff that we elected, maybe.
Well, I don't know who's on the board, I guess.
Some random police chief that some wackadoo board hired, I'm not done with that, you know, I, I mean, we're, that, it's, it's.
Government overreach.
Yeah.
Shall not be infringed.
Truthfully, I don't want the sheriff determining that for me too, but if, if there was somebody to do so.
At the least it's elected official.
The sheriff is somebody we elected.
Yeah, elected official is a big thing.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, oh boy, that's a big one there.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole nother episode.
I was like Caleb, don't go down that road.
Ah, nah, nah, um, by the way, it's funny because I just saw in the chat, um, one of my fans, Bright Can, he, uh, he's from Canada, so he has no idea what we're talking about as far as guns. Because they're Canadian, they, they don't get to have guns.
So how do those Canadians handle uh, the bear in the woods?
Oh, you, you can have rifles in like for like, uh, for hunting and stuff like that.
Rifles aren't dangerous?
Oh, they're, I mean, I'm pretty sure rifles are what most of uh.
So do you have to get a permit from the Northern Alberta uh, government to own, own a rifle? Or can you just go to the store, buy a rifle, because I need to protect my family from uh, uh, bears?
That's, that's a great, that's a great question, I'm not sure, I'm assuming some dude in a red suit has to show up on a horse and give you, you know, a, a permit, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's gotta be Dudley Do Right or some shit, I don't know.
Isn't there like a, a law in Alaska that you have to be armed if you're by yourself in the woods or something?
Certain areas.
Or like if you get, yeah.
You can, you can own a gun with, like, you can conceal a firearm in Alaska without a permit.
Sure.
But.
And then like Texas, right?
Yeah, it's, it's like an open carry.
Way it should be here.
What do they call it, constitutional carry, constitutional carry.
Uh, interesting, I always wondered about that with.
I'm gonna look it up.
With Canada, uh, you know, what, 95% of Canada is extremely rural.
Yeah.
And, and so I'm sure.
It's very underpopulated though, it's, you know, you're bigger cities.
It's populated by bears and wolves.
And moose and shit, moose are huge.
Yeah.
They're big, they'll mess you up.
It, I know what else will mess you up, I just watched it, is uh, we had a rogue goose.
Oh yeah.
Over the weekend.
Oh yeah.
He'd lost his mind, he needed shot, but no one did shoot.
Um, Canadian gun laws are governed by a combination of federal legislation and regulations and province, provincial enforcement. Primary legislation is in the Firearms Act, it's uh, firearms, three categories, non-restricted, restricted and prohibited, that doesn't mean anything to me, that's.
You can't have an assault rifle, probably.
Well.
So we.
You can't have an assault rifle.
A so-called assault rifle.
Yeah, uh, but you can have, I mean, an AR is just a single shot rifle, um, uh, restricted firearms such as handguns and certain rifles require a certification from the RCMP, so the guys in the red suits.
So a bold action.
It's only $25 fee.
A bold, a bold action, 30 out of six, you can have, of course, in your house to protect you from the wolves.
Yeah, it was, I think it's probably just like here, you know, you, you, you can be licensed to carry a firearm, you can conceal a firearm, but if you use it for stupid, for stupid stuff, then you're gonna get in trouble. I mean, if you, if I used it, my gun right now to shoot you, I'm gonna get in trouble.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we've been kind of in hindsight, when you talk about uh, responsible gun ownership. Uh, of course, a lot of Republicans were madder than hell when they passed safe, safe storage here in Michigan. Um, I'm still not super happy about it, but that being said, it sucks that the state government has to tell you, hey, there's minors in the house, you should probably uh, lock up your gun, because let me tell you now, it's happened.
Yeah.
So a little toddler gets a hold of a gun and shoots himself.
Happens a couple times a year.
And, and there needs to be a consequence to that, um, my, my handgun is not locked, but the grandchildren wouldn't find it.
The thing is, is when I was around my children, more often, um, I carried my gun, my gun wasn't locked, it was, it was safely stored. But my kids also knew from the beginning, like, no, that's, that's, and I mean, now I kept it out of reach, it was either on me or put away um, where they couldn't get to it, but technically that would fall under safe, or unsafe storage.
Well, there's a law now, if you, you have to keep it locked.
Yeah.
Anybody under 18 that even enters the house of something happened, not only civilly, now criminally, and these prosecutors are going after them for it, um, it's.
But the problem is, is if.
You know what, it's not gonna, it's not gonna stop little kids.
No, they'll figure it out, they'll figure it out.
Getting that gun.
Yeah.
They, they can unlock it, yeah.
Yeah.
My, my, and my concern.
Unlock dad's liquor cap.
Yeah, my concern is, and it's like age old, it's, okay, yeah, protecting eight, under 18, but what about that 25 year old breaking into my house, now I have to unlock my safe? I have to load my firearm, I might as well just lay there and get raped.
No, that, that's where self, uh, safe storage sucks. Is, is uh.
The catch 22.
Yeah, when you go to bed, I sleep with a loaded handgun next to me on, on the nightstand, and I am violating the law. Now, no one is in the home that's under 18, so I'm not violating the law, but yet that does change the game, I, I have this to protect my family, but I have to keep it locked up.
I also had to protect.
It's too late.
It from my family?
Protect the family from it?
I.
And, and when someone's smashing in your sliding glass door with a baseball bat, seconds matter.
Oh, absolutely.
I just got in an argument with Dennis Curtis about this, that he keeps his uh, some, he, he has no minors in the home, he does during the day, when he goes to bed, he don't. He's an old guy like me, um, and well, oh, he doesn't keep one uh, uh, chambered.
So he has a metal stick.
He doesn't keep one chambered, that doesn't make any sense to me, I don't even wanna take a second to chamber one, it, it's pick it up and shoot.
Yeah, I'm assuming that they already have one chambered, they're criminals, they're not obeying the law.
So that means they're ahead of you on that.
Yeah, that means you're dead.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, if you don't have one in the chamber, then you're, you're carrying a big metal stick.
If I have a loaded gun, guess what, it's chambered.
Oh, absolutely, we, we know somebody that has a CPL that refuses to carry a chambered, uh, a chambered weapon. Um, and I tell him all the time, you, you're just carrying around a stick and a holster.
Yeah.
Cuz I got one holster, or I got one chambered, so anyways, that's.
Should we talk about city politics?
Maybe.
We'll get there.
You knew we would eventually, uh, Caleb, running for Jackson City Council.
Mm-hmm.
Ward 3.
Yes.
By the way, uh, you ran before.
I have.
Ward 3 was different then.
It was, it was a little bit bigger, uh, we did have the other side of Cooper, um, I think all the way, it was on the other side of Cooper and I think it was like a block away, if you go on the other side of Cooper into, onto the next street, and I found a few, uh, few agreeable voters, but now it has since shrunk in size, so literally the boundary is Cooper, Ganson, um, what, Cooper and Ganson going east.
Yeah.
East and west.
All the way north to uh.
North to.
Uh, what's that street by the uh, cross from the sick, off Cooper, I know it, why am I?
Porter.
Porter. Porter.
But I actually get that street next to Porter.
Yeah.
And, um, I think it's Frost and then after that's Blackman Township at the roundabout.
Yeah.
Going the other way, I get all the way to North. North Street Leroy, yeah, North Street Leroy and then Ganson's my other. So it goes Cooper, Ganson.
Is it a square?
Yeah, it's a square. Cooper, Ganson, and then.
What ward was I in over on Orange?
You were in the current Ward Three.
Okay, uh, that's what I thought, but I wasn't, I was.
And it was Ward Three then, too.
And where?
Uh, I was on Orange Street.
The very end.
Yeah, Orange Street is still in Ward Three.
Okay.
Yeah, so when you ran for that ward before, you lived over there at the time, remember?
It, it might have been af, I might have lived there before then because it was, um. What was his name? The other guy, uh, the, uh, skydiver dude.
Yeah, Jeremy.
Jeremy. He was the one that, uh, came over to my house one time. I don't know if that was.
Let's, let's talk about your opponents here. You're the only. Alright, so wards one, three and five.
Have a general election.
Are up for, for election this year. And Ward Three is the only one with a primary.
Primary, yep, so there will be an August.
That would be you.
Yes.
Jeremy Alexander. Excuse me, and, uh, the incumbent.
Uh, Angelita. Doesn't, yeah, it's, she likes, prefers the Spanish, Angelita Gunn.
You know, I do not know her. I know.
I don't really know her either that well.
Right.
Self, yeah.
I, let's see, rest of the council. I know. Relatively well from Will Philgrave to Arlene over the years, Freddie. Even Connor a little bit. I don't know Connor real well, but I. Everybody knew who Connor Woods was.
Yeah, who he was.
Especially if you're.
His wife, I think, I, I got to know Connor because of his wife, Kelsey, that was.
I, he, uh. Gunn, uh, just come out of nowhere, where Connor, for example, was the chair of the Jackson Democratic Party. Was big into the statewide redistricting and.
Yes.
Uh, politically active. Um, and so, uh, I wouldn't say we know each other well, but we do know who each other, where I didn't know her at all.
Right.
Other than I've been to us recently, I, I've been going to the city council meetings. I hadn't been to one in a few years. Since I haven't owned property in the city. Tell you the truth. The city's worn me down.
Yeah.
City politics. When, when I had no property in the city and I was minding my own business in Leoni. Uh, I just put city politics on the black burner, let everybody else fight the fight.
Yeah.
And they've done good. You, there's some warriors out there, uh, that can take my place. Um, but recently I've been to a couple of city council meetings. Um, you know, you can't. Outside residents of the city shouldn't ignore city politics.
No, they shouldn't.
It affects everything.
It does. It, it's the, uh. The hub of the city. Now, Jackson though is, uh, not peculiar, peculiar. Um, but the cities. I was about to say blue. It's not way, way.
Not way, way.
It's bluish.
It's purple.
Purple, yeah.
But, and the county is very rad.
Yes, very much so.
And, 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 uh. Uh, so we have a dynamic here where our county commission is, uh. Uh, seven are Republicans, two are Democrats were in the city, which is nonpartisan.
Right.
Uh, but most are left leaning. How is Gunn? How is she? Where do you think her politics is are?
Good question.
Uh, I would have to say, I think. From what I understand, she was in charge of the Aware Shelter, so she is very much into. Uh, domestic abuse of women. I know that she was in favor of having social workers accompany the police. On, on, on routes because we did kind of, we didn't have a debate, but we had a discussion about it. Um, but she still is for, you know, the safety of the social workers, but she, I do believe that if she. Had her way, there would be more social workers out on the beat with.
What's, what's her background? Where'd she work, you know?
I, I know that she doesn't work at the Aware. She's not the director of the Aware Shelter. I think she has a s, I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but I think it's a psychologist or psychiatry.
I wondered if she might have been.
Two thousand fifteen from what I was reading. Um. I, I, uh. I know that she's. She's very, um.
Is her voting record mainly with the mayor?
I would think it would be with the mayor because, uh, Derek was. Four years ago when she ran, his daughter was a little bit younger and so he had pictures of him. Pushing her around in a wagon, getting signatures to get Angelita on the ballot in, uh, two thousand.
Answered a lot of it.
Twenty-one, yeah, so.
So she's not affiliated or employed by the AFL-CIO that you know?
She may or may not be.
At this point, no one knows.
Know where.
By the way, I don't believe she is, cause that's just been exposed and talked about in depth.
Okay.
On, on John Wilson's podcast.
Alright.
Uh, uh, Connor Woods is Mahoney is Connor's wife is.
Yes.
She's former city council. Colleen Sullivan, former city council, works for AFL-CIO. And of course, the king of Jackson Democratic Party, uh, Derek Dobie is their chief of staff.
The puppet master, I'll say it.
Two sitting, uh, city council people are, are employed for the AFL-CIO. Which is a huge conflict. It's bubbling up right now, by the way.
Well, yeah.
It is. It's been that way for a while.
And I'll tell you, the race to watch for me is going to be Ward Five. I'm curious with Shalonda Hunt. How is she going to be able to hold two offices, uh, school board?
Right.
And city council, should, should she make?
This has come up before.
And is there a precedent where she's allowed to do that?
She can.
Okay, that they can hold.
But.
I know she was appointed, but never elected to fulfill the term for lower selecty that was redistricted. So I'm curious.
They were gonna have to change meeting dates.
Yeah, they were, because they both met on a Tuesday night.
And, and they were gonna accommodate.
Yeah.
What happened to her didn't, uh?
So she didn't get enough signatures for the ballot when Christie May. Ran in twenty twenty-three.
That's right.
So, yeah, there wasn't, yeah.
And, and she, is she Christie's opponent in the general?
She is, yep. She made, she got enough signatures.
Okay.
On the ballot and, uh, yeah, she will be.
So, uh, so Ward Three has a primary, Jeremy.
Angelita.
Angelita.
Caleb Blankey, yeah.
Uh, Jeremy has served on city council before and on our county commission.
Yep.
Um. I've supported Jeremy in the past. Uh, Jeremy, uh. Used to be a solid political figure. Uh, it was funny, I just wanna bring up a situation. Um, back when him and, uh, Craig Pappin sat on council to be together.
Yep.
Uh, they were the only conservative voices. And they were just, they worked well.
Yeah, they did work well together.
And, and one day I asked, I don't know if it was Craig or, or Jeremy. Uh, boy, did you, you guys talk before the meetings? And they're like, no. We're just on the same.
Yeah, same wavelength.
Same length. And I was like, how can that be? But I will tell you, sitting on the Leoni Township Board. I don't communicate throughout the month with the other board members. I might run into them, hey, how you doing, da, 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 da. We don't call on the phone. We, we just don't. And, uh, one of, uh, uh, the Leoni Township trustees, Ron Kinch. And I tend to be on the same page. We, our, our views of politics are very similar. And I, I, uh, what? We tend to already know what we're gonna do. So that is possible to do. It's just because our, our budget concerns and things like that. Are on the same wavelength, so it can be done. You, you would think, oh, those guys must have taught, but it doesn't always happen, you know? Um, Jeremy unfortunately was in a, in a, uh. Horrible skydiving accident a few years ago and, uh, has had his struggles. And, uh, I think he's overcoming them quite a lot.
He's very improved since I saw him last year at this time, very improved.
And last I spoke to him, he, he is a sharp, sharp guy.
Yep.
Um, I, I do, do question though, unfortunately for Jeremy, if, uh. If that position is right for him, under, under the circumstances and the hurdles that he has overcome and I think there's more to overcome. Um, you, you, uh, how long did you live in the city, Jeremy, Caleb?
Uh, two thousand nine. And, um, just, uh. It's been, yeah, I've been two thousand nine. Yep, and, uh, while you're up here or while, while we're talking about it. Um, I have here a document called Homeowners Assistant Program Mortgage. This was, I don't know if we can get a close-up of this or not, but in two thousand nine.
Give me a second, I can see what I can do for you.
Okay. Let's see if I can find it. The homeowners assos, home homeowner assistant program. Was available in two thousand nine when the, uh. Rebates or when you. Up to five thousand for the first time home buyers credit. And now I'm trying to find out.
Did you buy your homeowner that scenario?
I did. I was able to get it without any closing cost. Um, now I can't find the name. Okay, it was Jackson Affordable Housing Corporation. They're no longer in existence. And when I tried to refinance, they had no record of it.
Oh, really?
Place.
Oh.
I tried to refinance in twenty twenty for a lower, for a fifteen-year mortgage, cause I could only get a thirty year back in the day. Um, but yeah, this is the Jackson Affordable Housing Commission or Corporation. And a lady by the name of Cindy Duncan was able to, uh, get us the closing cost all paid for. The only, um. Caveat was I had to live in the city for five years. Well, I'm like, well, that's not gonna be a problem.
Right.
So it was forgiven and, uh, yeah, it was nice because I didn't, it didn't have to cost me or the buyer. The, uh, closing costs and that's one vision I'd like to see brought back to Jackson if we have any extra city funds.
So Caleb, right now, under the Hundred Homes Project.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's thirty-five K in down payment assistant.
Okay.
Uh, two versions, uh, ones from the state. And I think the city has an angle on twenty-five from the state. I forgot how that goes and then, uh, ten from the city. I think probably monies that was set aside from the ARPA funds. That's where you see the brand new homes.
Yeah.
And, but my, it's funny you brought that up. Uh, so home purchasing for young families, first time buyers. Has been in existence for a long time, one way or another.
Okay, I just know that it was.
Apparently, yeah.
Yeah, it was in two thousand nine.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can't speak for, for today. I just know that. Our, our homes are still competitive compared to Blackman and Summit. If you were to look at a house in the city. I bet you we could be competitive with Blackman or Summit.
Would depend on where you're at in Blackman.
But, yeah.
Um. Uh, uh, I guess in Summit too.
Yeah.
If you took Vandercook, uh, for example, the housing inventories is identical to the city inventory, if you ask me.
They'll probably be comparable.
Yeah, very. And then you take those outskirts neighborhoods into Blackman. Uh, that butt up against the city, well, there, there's really no, uh, difference there.
Right.
Leoni's a lot the same way. Uh, you know, it's just, uh, neighborhoods and neighborhoods of old, old. Housing stock that were built in the thirties, forties and fifties.
I just know in the Ward Three, the houses are, are original, literally on my street and the few streets over, literally were built in nineteen seventy.
So you're right.
So we're not like, if you go to Ward Six, I think you'll see the hundred-year homes, you know, homes that were built in nineteen twenty or even earlier, nineteen hundred. But, but, but my Ward Three, I would say we're actually the relatively newer homes on the block.
All those streets running north of from North Street. Uh, uh, there are the, some of the newer housing stock in the city. Uh, seventies.
Yep, nineteen seventy.
Yeah, all them, a lot of them have run up through there and I know where you live.
I would say so, say, uh, ten to twenty percent at least on Ellery are the original owners from nineteen seventy. It was either passed down to them from their father. Or they're still.
Yeah.
They're still the guys that are still hanging around.
Uh, well, I was gonna ask, I'll put my glasses on, so like, see what I'm doing. Oh.
Uh-oh.
Well.
Well, now it's.
Yeah, well, uh, the Signal Plan Podcast does not provide, um.
Insurance.
Uh, optical insurance, so.
I need a spare pair of readers in the.
I broke, I broke my pair yesterday.
Studio here, um, uh, oh, where are we at? I was gonna ask you about. Hundred Homes Project. So they're building a lot of new homes.
Yep.
With this down payment assistance. Um, personally, I don't care. I think it's great. Okay, now I think the homes are priced too high. They're a hundred and ninety-five K.
Yeah.
Uh, but they're helping with, I think it's thirty-five thousand down payment assistance to get first time buyers in them. Same scenario, I think you gotta live in them five years.
Yep.
And, and a lot of people on my side of the political aisle in, in Jackson snub their nose at it. Me, I, I don't care. I'm not spending. I'm not paying a hundred and ninety K, uh, for a home in the city. Um, but I don't blame people that may. One, it's a brand new home. Uh, brand new home is a brand new home. Uh, a couple of them have garages attached to them and I, and I think. That's not a bad looking house.
Not a bad looking house.
John King, although he can't spit it out appropriately in, in, in city council, uh. Uh, comment period. He, he, uh, he referenced though that some of them without the garages kinda look like. Um, oh. US government-built homes look like project.
Like the, like the cookie cutter.
And, and I see where he's getting to that. Um, I don't know, they're not bad looking. I like the ones with the garages. Here's the thing.
Yeah.
I haven't really seen any of them in a neighborhood I'd wanna buy a home.
There's the problem.
Uh, who wants to live on Cooper? Uh, who wants to live on Biddle until you change the whole street? There's, those homes are old. Um, now, I, I don't get around every street in the city and there's probably a couple somewhere on a nice quiet street somewhere. Well, I know the east side, your ward's got a couple.
Yeah, three doors down from me, there's one that's being built and they actually, they actually dug up the road. And took out the lead pipe that went into the house, what I'm seeing. So, yeah, they're not only just building the houses, but they're, at least on Ellery, the one that I noticed. Is that they had the opportunity to take out the lead pipe.
Well, I would hope they do that.
Right.
That'd be idiotic not to.
Yeah, so.
Right.
And that's, that's the thing is that. Yeah, you can fix the roads, but what happens three years later when you gotta replace the lead pipe?
Right, that's, that's been a big concern.
That's been a problem. They're like, everybody's like, fix the roads. I said, you're not asking me to just fix the roads. You're asking me to. Replace the lead pipe as well, because what's the point of fixing your roads when they come back a year later? Dig up that same road, which has been happening and replacing the lead pipes.
Right.
So, you know, if we're gonna do it, let's go a hundred percent.
There was a home I noticed on the corner of, it'd be Park in Detroit.
Yeah.
Um, that a, um, old associate of mine, just someone I, you know, knew through a friend. Um, had lived there and it's, but it's been boarded up probably for six months. I just drove by there yesterday. And I noticed that there's a new home being built. I didn't know if that was part of that program.
No, I don't think it might, I'm not familiar with that particular occasion, but additionally to the Hundred Homes Project. There is a developer on the east side of town.
Okay.
Encouraging the Cooper running east area, hospital area.
Right.
That's building thirty homes for rentals.
Okay, I wasn't sure.[1675.61]
Brand new homes.
Yeah, no, they look, it looks good. It looks nice. I mean, it's it's just a, it's just a shell.
Yes.
Now, that's interesting. Now, why is, why aren't we pursuing home ownership on that? Why would?
Because the guy's a private citizen, uh, invested in his own money uh, and buying empty lots and sticking homes on them.
And how much is it costing him to put these homes?
I have no idea. I guess that's his business.
And they put this home up quick. Uh, this was on the corner of uh Park in Detroit.
Okay.
Okay.
The district we're talking about that he's doing this is what they call the hospital district. So it's everything from the the neighborhood uh, west of the hospital all the way to Cooper Milwaukee Street area.
Yeah.
Uh, MLK area.
Yeah, right where I'm talking.
And in in now.
I'm just curious, how is he getting zoning for this? Cause it's hard to buy, but build anything on a lot here in the city. I'm just curious how.
The same way the city zoning uh, brand new homes for the Hundred Homes Project.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, you take an existing home uh, that's condemned or whatever, tear it down and put a new home there. Uh, he's figured it out. Now, I'm gonna say this. Uh, I'm sure the city's bending over backwards to assist him to do this. Who knows if he's got state money.
I'm sure.
Behind him to promote it or even Henry Ford money. I I don't know. Yeah, it's funny how, uh, so Henry Ford's on a big kick to revitalize the neighborhood. Uh, that that they're located at. So if you go uh, east of of the hospital. Uh, Loomis Park area.
Yeah.
That's a pretty higher end partially neighborhood right there around the park.
It can be kinda sketchy though there too.
Yeah, I know.
We own a business. We over there.
I used to call that area.
East Central.
The East Central.
East Central.
Those, all those homes uh behind uh, 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 Miracle One and Dentons and all that. Uh, I used to call it, you had the east side, then you had East Central and uh, uh, that's where he's located. They're calling it the hospital district.
That makes sense in a weird way.
Whatever it is, it is a private developer that that's doing it.
I'm betting that it it looks like a private developer.
John Q Citizen Ward three wanted to buy, wants to buy these lots, these empty lots. It's it's right next door to them. And they're like, the city will not sell it to us. We cannot, we've been, we've been trying to do auctions. And I, John Q Citizen's like, hey, that Hundred Project Home, that was, that's right across the street from me on Ellery. It's like, I would have liked to.
Ellery'd be a good street to live in, one of the Hundred Homes Project.
Well, that's what I was pointing out.
And we thought it was always on school ground because it looked like it was part of Northeast Elementary.
It was a city lot.
It's actually like a city lot. Apparently it didn't belong to Northeast. It was an abandoned vacant lot. We didn't know. It was always part of the school.
The reason I brought up that particular location was exactly what you said is about the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
That corner of Park in Detroit, it, there's, there are some nice homes right there, but.
I'm not living there.
Uh, cause I live a couple of blocks up and I mean, I'm not worried. It's just me and my dog, you know? And, you know, I live right on Michigan, but I try not to go down that Amanetti's area. Not speaking bad about Amanetti's, but just that whole area is a little.
Kevin and Caleb.
It's Detroit street.
Here's the question.
Yes.
Are they building any of these Hundred Home Projects in Essex Heights?
I haven't been there, so I.
I'll guarantee you they're probably not.
Okay.
Or that neighborhood at the bottom of Essex Heights.
Doctors and lawyers from Ann Arbor live, right?
You know, now maybe there's no empty lots that the city owns, uh, cause most of these come from foreclosure, but yeah, I bet you there's a random one somewhere. And you don't see him hurry up putting a hundred homes uh, home in uh there. I don't know why. It's a brand new house.
Four forty farm, shit like that, yeah.
Well, that's in Blackman. Yeah, I know, but.
But those, those neighborhoods, yeah, I agree. I I I don't know.
I'm not opposed to the Hunter Homes Project and I'm definitely not opposed. Some guy wants to spend his own money, whether he gotta do state grants, whatever.
I, I'm just.
New housing stock is new housing stock.
I have a problem with the city, city picking winners and losers though. Like, why can't my John Q neighbor build a house or buy a vacant lot, but this private developer, we're, we're, they're, they're in the business of choosing winners and, you know, losers for for these lots and and that's.
Especially if the lot's just sitting there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this lot's been sitting there, they finally had to board up the door because people are just living there.
Yeah.
Um, and this is probably.
The city's uh uh aggressively gonna start selling some of those lots. I don't know.
Yeah, but they're not gonna sell them to my neighbor. They're gonna sell them to the private guy, private business guy out of Ohio.
Do you know a municipality cannot sell property and make a profit?
I didn't know that.
Well, somebody is. I mean, I don't know how that.
Well, they can sell it for the fair market value.
Right.
They can. Uh, I'll make a prob, I've just learned that in Leonie. Um, anyways, they're building homes in the city of Jackson for the first time since I can remember, cause apparently prior to that was in the seventies and that was in Caleb's neighborhood and I was just a little kid.
Yeah, and I wasn't even thought of.
Broken glasses here.
Getting old.
Downtown parking.
Mm-hmm.
You, you're familiar with everything.
I am, yeah, yep.
Uh, the Chamber put out um, uh, suggestion uh, last week uh, for the city to consider. Uh, alright, they put, we're gonna do meters and then within a month later, like.
No, meters is a bad idea.
Yeah. And.
There was some resistance.
If they didn't do anything that would have put the uh, uh, burden of paying for parking lot maintenance that they're short on uh, on the business owners, which then in return would mean that the cost of doing business.
Right.
There potentially be more. So the Chamber came in and says, uh, we're gonna increase fees. So if you over, you're in a two hour parking and you're two hours fifteen minutes, the fee will go from whatever, fifteen dollars to like eighty. Increase the fees, expand uh, parking for. So I I never thought of this and Kevin, you can answer this for me. Um, employees downtown. You, you, you work at Joe Schmo's Shoe Store.
Yeah.
And you gotta park somewhere.
You do.
And apparently the the fee to park down there, the, if you overextended your parking was cheaper than paying for off, paying for parking? How do P, how do employees park downtown, Kevin? You work down there?
I just parked. I mean, I'm thinking about where I've worked downtown and.
Got a few of his own spots.
For, well, I know, for example, um, we know some people who live, who live in downtown above some.
Yeah, where's Rhonda Park?
Uh, she parks right down the street.
So you pretty much can park.
I always parked across the street in that um.
So most of your main parking on Michigan Ave, you can just park there.
Yeah, I will.
No time limit, right?
Even, no, not that, and if there were, I, we, I don't, never saw anybody enforcing it.
So there are sections where there are time limits. So you know where you got green parking, red parking, all that. They need to change that.
Um, another good example is I have been seeing a new doctor um, at the uh, One Jackson Center or whatever, across from Chase there. And they have a sign that says one, or I think it's one hour, two hour parking. And I've been there way longer than that and nobody's ever.
By the way, it's after hours, there's no parking enforcement. So it's it's during.
Well, I'm talking about one o'clock in the afternoon with the doctors at the One Jackson Square, so.
Anyways, I I don't know how you feel, but I think, I don't know, I I go downtown and need every now and then. I'd still would have fed a meter. I buy shoes down there twice a year. I would have.
If there was a meter, I'd feed it.
But I do see where it could have been detrimental to the businesses downtown.
Yeah, if you're the grocery store or if you're the store clerk at the health food store.
Now, we know a major, Kevin and I know a major uh, owner of businesses downtown. He's like, yeah, let there be meter parking.
He doesn't care. He did, that did not, I've talked to him a lot.
Worried about it one bit.
Nope.
Um, anyways, there's a new structure on how to cover. Now, if you watch his homes, Jackson, John Wilson will say, eh, the money's somewhere. They're just not coughing it up, you know? Uh, there's always uh, hidden pots of money according to John Wilson, which more than likely there probably is.
Um, there's always money somewhere.
Yeah, they have to have an emergency fund for a rainy day.
I think.
Is that what he's, is that what he's looking at?
No, well.
Take some of that money from the rainy day.
It's kinda like, it's like, uh, he makes a big deal about, uh, so there's street reconstruction going on right now where they decided not to assess the property owners. They found that money somewhere. The pump.
Mm-hmm.
Down to the county, the county distributes it out uh, to the municipalities. Cities have a different funding mechanism. I believe they get their own Act fifty one money, but the townships rely on the county.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Yeah, it trickles down.
But they haven't increased this in years and that's why our local roads are shit. They just are. Um, and I, I, I'm a township, uh.
Did you say that about M fifty though or M ninety nine or?
That's different.
Roads don't.
Those are secondary roads.
They're not. They're not. Um, I think those are wrapped into pretty much this interstate.
Cause that's not a county thing, right?
That's right. Those are state roads.
That's what I understood too.
Yeah, you're right. Your M sixties, M fifties, M whatever.
Anything M is going to be.
Gonna be pretty good.
Uh, and they, and of course the interstates, look at all the work they've done. I get asked all the time, what about our roads? What about our roads? There's no money for the roads for Corey Kennedy. It is. I, I think the county could do more and they don't, but they're limited in the funds. But Kathy Smoltz, the House Republicans passed away to uh, fix uh, local roads statewide without raising taxes.
And they were gonna do this how?
Saving money on money they're wasting elsewhere.
Something about buckets.
Somebody's gotta get caught. I mean, is it gonna be?
Something will get cut.
Gotta get caught.
Uh, something will get cut.
Okay.
Uh, but of course, uh, Whitmer is, has floated ideas from tolls on the interstates to uh, uh, upping the gas tax to uh, uh, mileage tax on your car. Because what happens right now is your electric vehicles don't pay gas tax.
That's true.
Right?
And by twenty thirty, aren't they supposed to all be electric?
But and that'll make it worse.
I know, right?
Right? So she's thinking about putting Gizmos on your car that track your miles annually and that's how you would pay your mileage tax. Okay, well, people like me are, don't track me.
You're not gonna track me.
I don't even like it when my insurance sends me a thing.
Yeah.
So anyways, the House bill to do it is stalled in, in the state senate and the state senate is controlled by Democrats. But Kathy Smoltz really thinks, she told me this a couple of months ago, that the governor's gonna put pressure on the state senate to pass a road package.
Really?
Local roads package because she's gonna want, fix the damn roads is what she.
That's where she campaigned.
Yes, she's termed out, but she wants to set it up, one for her legacy and two, she needs her buddies to get re, get elected.
Right, yeah.
As governor, attorney general, secretary of state, secure, keep the state house, all that.
Right.
So she really thinks there's gonna be something. Well, I, I'm gonna, my prediction here, while it isn't gonna be the freebie version that the House Republicans came up with, but maybe they can mesh it together to where the House.
Maybe everybody pays a little bit.
You're gonna have to pay.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, well, even if the state pays, it doesn't matter. That's still, we're paying. People forget that. If, oh, the state's paying for it. Well, who, who pays the state?
That's just like, hey, Leonie Township, we're gonna give you a grant for new picnic tables at the Fifth Street Park. Well, I'm gonna approve that state grant. It doesn't matter. That means you're still paid.
Yeah, somebody, we're, we're, the, the citizens and the taxpayers are still paying for that money.
But, um, so Kathy told me this a couple of months ago and I'm trying to get her to my township uh, board meeting. Board meeting's on Tuesday. Houses in session on Tuesday.
Ah.
Uh, it's difficult to do. I'm gonna try to get her there in July. Maybe they'll be on vacation or something. But I was at a legislative breakfast uh, uh, Friday. And it had the Democrat House Rep for District forty seven, which covers part of Summit, Napoleon, Norville, Columbia, way into Washington County.
Okay.
Uh, she was there. She was outnumbered, by the way, cause uh, State Senator Sue Schink did not make it.
Oh.
Oh.
So uh, she was there, Sarah Lightner, Kathy Smoltz and Senator Lindsay were all there. So the poor Democrat didn't stand a chance. Now, she did good. She held her own.
Right.
Uh, Kathy brought it up again and confirmed by Sarah Lightner. Um, they think that something's gonna happen and as an elected official in a township, the state has to save this. The county don't have it. The money coming from Act fifty one is not enough. And then the money trickled down to the township. Same thing with the city. I think they get their own Act fifty one. There's not enough money. And.
Never enough money.
In order to grow this state and population and business and everything else.
Industry.
We need to figure this out.
Yeah.
It, it, it's a major deal. So I'm hopeful that, that I, I was enjoying my deck yesterday, Kevin.
Uh-huh.
And my neighbors two doors down, which, you know, we, it's like me and you talking.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, they had company over Father's Day. I don't even know his name. It's Tim's uh, or Kim's son-in-law.
Okay.
Hey, Ross. Oh, yeah, what's up, Bob? What are you gonna do about damn roads around here? Dibber 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 dibber. And I'm like, nothing. I says, we're gonna do nothing.
Yeah.
Uh, I explained the situation and uh, I don't know where he lived. And I, I explained the situation legitimate. By the way, I voted no on the Leonie Township budget. I was the only no vote because it didn't include any road funding. I, I'm like, can we fix one road, one township road?
Just one.
Just one. Uh, we, we have marijuana money. Uh, we, we have more money than most municipalities. Can we, can, can we do one a year just so it looks?
Isn't that kinda drying up those marijuana?
No, not at all. Consumption's still there. Caleb, check this out.
Yeah.
So our marijuana enforcement uh, unit.
Yeah.
We, we have cops that work at four ti, full time.
Yeah.
Um, we have um, reduced from two of them to three because medical applications are down and then I've seen dispensaries closing.
Yeah.
Okay?
Right.
And so he's preparing us, hey, guys, the money gravating train's there, but it could start reducing. And I looked at him and says, no, it won't. Consumption is still there.
Right.
Consumption's still there. So if we go down from twelve dispensaries down to four.
Uh-huh.
The big ones, the ones.
Yeah.
By one twenty seven, the ones by, right?
Choice ain't going anywhere.
Consumption, consumption isn't going down.
No.
They're just gonna make those four, five or six busier.
Yeah.
It, it, it's, it's easy, consumption's increasing.
Yeah, and I don't think that medical, you know, the medical applications going down has any sense. Why would you jump through the, the hoops? If it's just legal.
You know municipalities don't receive excise tax on medical marijuana.
Oh, really?
Only on recreational.
Oh, well, that's positive.
Laws.
That's positive.
But we're, with every application in Leonie, you can charge up to five thousand dollars a year to renew your application to be in the medical or the uh, recreational business. Or, or even grow lab, whatever.
The, the whole gamut.
Alright, so we, the dispensaries aren't renewing their medical.
Right, cause no one's buying medical. You can buy it recreational.
Right.
And so.
That would be ten grand.
But we, we paid, we paid our three marijuana compliance cops
Uh-huh.
From application money. It decreased, so naturally we went from three to two.
Right.
We're still covered.
Right.
But as far as excise tax, um, that's only if you buy recreational.
Uh.
And I'm gonna go back to.
So that's, it, it kinda washes out then.
You wanna hear something weird, Kevin?
Uh-huh.
It, it'll never happen. The only way Leonie Township, for example, is gonna lose excise tax, consumption money, purchasing money is if people stop buying at our premier dispensaries. Now, the city has dispensaries.
Right.
Okay, other communities have dispensaries.
Right.
Right? As a township, you almost want to help encourage people to buy marijuana in a Leonie Township dispensary rather than in a city dispensary.
Well, yeah.
Because if they buy in a city dispensary, we're not getting a cut of the excise tax. I'm not saying the township's gonna run out and start help promoting and marketing for the marijuana business.
Yeah.
But if you really think about it that way, I want you to buy at Choice.
Yeah.
Uh, on Page Ave, then, then the cookie over here on, on Pearl Street, wherever the hell it's at.
Absolutely. I mean, that makes sense. I mean, I, I'm a big thinker, aren't I, Kevin? I'm already thinking about, yeah, anyways.
We got into marijuana and we weren't even gonna go there. The city of Jackson is in the marijuana business. So is Leonie. Leonie is one of the big, is the biggest in the county and one of the biggest in the state.
Hmm.
Uh, we have ninety, ninety marijuana licenses.
Okay.
Caleb, you got the same look everybody always has. That's not dispensaries.
Okay.
We only have twelve dispensaries.
I was gonna say, there's no.
The rest are labs, grows, testing, delivery, the whole gamut. You have to have a marijuana license in order to be in that business.
Okay.
And Leonie has.
So Leonie would be the suppliers too.
Where suppliers.
To the city, the Cookies place downtown or the.
Potentially, uh, those places can get it from any supplier, but Choice Labs is a major lab.
Okay.
They have scientists.
Yeah, like actual scientists.
For new strands to get you high.
Yes, stoner scientist. No one, I never thought I'd see it.
And and then, of course, they have grows.
Yeah.
Choice has grows.
Testing is the big part.
And ta- testing. And and then, of course, Choice has dispensaries. Now, as large as Choice is, you go out Ann Arbor Road on the left, Choice Labs is a big.
That's a huge.
Get this, they're not the biggest in the state.
No.
They're way bigger. And Choice ain't no joke.
No.
It ain't no joke. Something Leoni don't like to talk about is the property tax revenue. They always like, oh, we had eight hundred thousand in uh, excise tax money, right? Okay, great. What about the increased property tax revenue for these massive plants? They they want you to forget about that section.
What was that industrial area that Choice is at currently? What was it before?
It was.
It was always kind of an industrial area, but.
So just like every major municipality, when I say that, suburban municipality, not Norville.
Yeah.
You develop, the big popular thing was to create uh, pre-ratty uh, industrial locations.
Like an industrial park, right?
Bring in small manufacturers and so.
Okay.
Sewer ready, utility ready, you know, things like that. So that was created and nobody moved there.
Yeah, that's been, it's been pretty empty as long as I remember.
The road was there. Nobody, nobody was moving in. The weed business moved in.
Yeah, Choice said, yeah, we'll take it.
They moved in. But that's popular to do, uh, to help.
Was that, was I right with saying like the industrial park?
Yeah, that was an industrial.
That's it, the idea?
I think, I think Leoni, typical Leoni, we paved the road and never ran the sewer.
Something stupid.
Yeah, something.
It it makes sense.
They just stopped short or something, you know, maybe that's why no one moved. But the marijuana guys came in with big deep pockets. No.
That's a big place now. I think they expanded from it.
Do you know to open a dispensary or go into marijuana business, um, per state law, you have to have a million dollars liquid. You can't say, I have a million dollars in property or a million dollars of stuff. You had to have a million dollars.
And you have to prove it was legitimate.
Yeah.
Legitimately, um.
But you know some of them wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, there's ways to get around that. But yeah, that's why there's multiple people usually with all licenses.
A lot of uh, people with deep pockets that ran into the marijuana industry and now they're eating it.
Yeah.
Because I've watched dispensaries close.
Well, yeah, I, when Detroit was all.
It was gonna happen. Like, as soon as it passed, it was like every s- every place on the corner.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Detroit pa- uh, Detroit was panicking there for a minute and I'm like, I knew it was going to happen.
Yeah.
You can't survive with five hundred different dispensaries in Leoni Township even. You know, like, that's a, it's.
And 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 you're in your little dispensary, uh, like near me, I got that Skybox.
Yeah.
At the end of Page at the railroad track. Who the hell's gonna drive out there?
Never seen anybody there, by the way.
And he's gotta buy his product from places like Choice.
Yeah.
And or and others and and well, they're not gonna give them the best deal. They're gonna give their own stores the best deal.
Yeah, Choice is gonna be able to sell their product for less than.
I don't see where it was the greatest business plan for some of these people.
Well, they're stoners.
They are stoners.
They're stoners.
I don't think all of them are, but they are stoners.
Yeah, most of them.
Most of them, like the one that owns Choice, you know, he's a major car.
Yeah, yeah, he was a car.
Bought your Chrysler products from him.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm yeah, familiar with that whole gap.
I don't know. I don't smoke weed.
I don't either. So I just, I mean.
I mean, I know a lot of people that smoke weed.
Yeah.
All my closest friends, on and on and on. I don't, I don't. Please help us out. Go buy weed at a Leoni Township dispensary so that we can buy a nu- new fire truck.
Yeah.
Or a sixty acre park.
Yeah, or or the the those those table, those picnic tables you talked about.
Now, this. The governor paid for those.
Oh, so we paid for them, got them.
No, she paid for them.
Out of her pocket?
Of course. All right, this show goes.
X the doubt on that one.
We go out over the place on this show.
Anyways, we never stick to the plan. It's a terrible name. We should re- remark it.
Rechange that.
Sewer and water increases. As a resident homeowner and a candidate for city council, where you sit on all that?
It was uh, something that was kicked down the road. I went to the water meeting. Uh, Jonathan Green made a good point. Patrick Birch never addressed the crumbling infrastructure that's at the city. Um, at the city treatment plant. He brought up the fact that the administration before Patrick Birch never dealt with uh, infrastructure of the crumbling pipes, you know, getting those fixed, keeping those properly maintained. It's just like, well, we're, we'll do it later, we'll do it later, we'll do it later. Well, you know, eventually the can got kicked down the road. Now we're dealing with the can. You know, weed liter- those pipes are literally a hundred years old.
Couldn't they have used ARPA money?
I don't think it would have been, they, that was only budgeted for like storefronts.
No, ARPA money, they could spend on anything they want and didn't decide.
They did do some technology. I I remember when Derek.
I'm not saying they pissed away ARPA money.
Yeah.
But they pissed it away.
But they decided not to put it into that.
They put some into it, is what I understood, but they were only limited to a certain amount. From what I understand, when I went to the city meeting, they were only limited for a certain amount for the water.
Oh.
There's a certain amount you can put towards storefront. There was a certain amount you could put toward. And they said that they budgeted all that they had for the water to, they they spent it on on a canister or something and they put in the new technology that if, you know, they're gone for the weekend and there is a pipe that bursts at the water treatment plant.
They would know.
They would, there would be an immediate alert sent to the engineer like, hey, you know, you got, you got something going on. Um, but yeah, my thing is, there's, there is no good solution.
There isn't.
Um, the only thing I can think of is, my plan is that I'm gonna have my hat in hand. I'm gonna go knock on Napoleon or Napoleon Township. I'm gonna knock on Blackman Township, Vandercook and say, would you like some water? Would you like some water?
Oh, you're gonna steal Leoni customers.
I'm gonna try and get Leoni, yeah.
Water or sewer, there is a difference.
Probably, well, probably, yeah, either one, but pri- primarily water.
We're not in the water business.
Matter of fact, the uh, city, the city guy that was running the pipes, he's like, you know, we already have a hookup to Blackman.
Yeah.
But because Patrick Birch got them all ticked off.
Do you know part of Blackman's already hooked to city water?
Yeah, part of it is, but like, they were literally going, we had the contract in hand, ready to have Blackman sign for that, for them to get their water. And they didn't, and they didn't want it at the last minute.
I feel ya. Um, we, we're dealing with a similar uh, situation in Leoni.
Yeah.
I have learned that sewer in particular problems and water are not uh, new to any municipality. They're all dealing with this. Um, and before I was uh, elected, uh, oh, I had a better understanding than most citizens.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda like you kinda did.
Yeah.
Um, but then I'd get elected and we're, we were dealing with facing increased, we do have a little bit of, we have some water customers of our own.
Okay.
Very little of the township. Half the township is hooked to sewer. The other half aren't hooked to sewer at all. Okay? They're still, they're using drain fields and septic tanks.
Oh, okay.
I realize Leoni is the second largest in area township in the state of Michigan. So when you think of Leoni Township, you think of Michigan Center.
Yeah.
It's not. We go miles north of ninety-four.
Really?
North of Portage Road, way up there. We.
Where's your boundary at?
Our boundary, our northeastern boundary is actually Portage Lake.
Whoa, okay.
Do you know East Jackson Schools, who is mostly in Leoni Township? Uh, but also encompasses Stockbridge, Waterloo, Henrietta.
Oh.
But now those are separate, you know, but the school boundary, it's the second in area township in the state. It's massive.
Uh huh.
People always think, uh, Page Ave and one twenty-seven, Michigan Center. That is actually the southern southeastern farthest portion of Leoni Township.
Okay.
It it really is. So we have mostly rural.
Yeah.
Most is rural and most, half those people are ha- are on uh, septic and drain field.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a different dynamic than the city.
Yeah.
So we're looking at the same problem, Caleb, where previous administrations didn't invest in the infrastructure, didn't do anything.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, they used to have our DPW, which was a a a group of five guys, uh, mow the lawn, uh, sweep streets and run the sewer plant.
Yeah.
They were never really qualified people to run a sewer plant. Um, and it.
Wouldn't have known how to do basic maintenance on busting.
Plus, the board wasn't approving any basic maintenance, just kick the can.
Preventative maintenance at all.
And uh, so long before I got there, uh, this, our current board, uh, got aggressive at uh, fixing the plant.
Yep.
Slowly, um, replacing our infrastructure for pipes. Uh, but what really made that come to the forefront is the state came in and says, you guys are a hot mess. If you don't fix this, we're gonna take over the plant.
Yeah.
And then what they would have done then was they would have created a special assessment district for the entire township to pay on the property taxes to fix the the uh, infrastructure of the sewer, which that means half the township would be paying for the sewer that they're not on.
Oh, wow.
So the city's in a different ballgame.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're all, we're all in this together.
Same thing with ARPA funds. Why don't you use ARPA funds? Why don't you use marijuana money to fix the sewer problem? Because then you're gonna have the other half of the township pissed off.
Yeah.
Because you're using money to fix their problem when it isn't their, the the.
Yeah.
Their problem.
When I've bought three new tires in the last year. Those are the goddamn roads.
We, Kevin, while you were out pooping, we were talking about sewer and sewer and hot roads.
I know, it would all come together.
But anyways, um.
I was peeing.
The dynamic as a board member, uh, I voted yes to incre- increase the sewer rate, uh, rates. Because of that right there, we could have used ARPA money. We could have used uh, marijuana money. And I I don't say we spend marijuana money totally appropriately. We bought a sixty acre Lakeside Park when we don't even, we can't even drive on the road to get to the park. Um, uh.
We have a park.
Well, we already had a Lakeside Park, right?
You gotta realize, we had the infrastructure for almost sixty thousand residents and we don't even have thirty, so it's.
Doesn't make any sense.
Please, will you take our water? That's where I'm at right now. Please, someone take our water.
And here's where Leoni has a problem. The city has the capacity to take on new customers, sewer and water.
Yeah.
Leoni doesn't because we're on a bit of a dissent decree to where we can't add any more customers to our sewer plant because it's in such bad shape because of kicking the can. So there's three stages to fixing this, um, to hook up new customers. And we're in stage two. Once we get through stage three, which is gonna cost a lot of money, you're right. Let's start selling sewer to others. The city, if I was your line of thinking.
Yeah.
Let's start hooking people, other municipalities, up to your, the city sewer, the city water.
City waters, at least, yeah.
We're in a predicament. We can't even do that.
Oh.
Yeah. But when people say, Ross, I pay sewer.
Yeah.
I don't like it either. Ross, that sewer, why didn't you guys use the marijuana money? Well, what about those people that aren't hooked to sewer? They want you to spend marijuana money on other things like Kevin just said.
Right.
The frickin' road.
That everyone uses.
Yeah.
That everyone.
What a concept.
Potentially could use. I might not, never drive down.
Realize this, that Consumers was hooked up to our water.
Yes.
They dug in, so now it's like, we're not talking twenty-eight thousand, like.
That was a huge blow to the city.
Huge blow to the city.
Huge blow. When consumer says, you know, I don't think so, city, we're not paying, and made their own water source
Yeah.
at the hydroelectric plant.
Yeah.
There, it was their largest customer. Yeah, but you know what gets me about consumers? And the city is always short to forget. I watched the last city council meeting
Mm-hmm.
where Consumers was proposing uh, their solar proposal uh, to the city, to not solar farms.
Yeah.
But just like the county did, you put solar in your parking lots or on your building to offset the cost of your consumption to save money.
Well, the sun doesn't shine for six months in Michigan, correct?
Right, right. Although, it's worked for the county so far. It's 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 offset there because you hope that you store enough of it through the sunny times to offset the cost of your electric consumption at county buildings. So I I might be wrong on this. Where the county screwed up, they used ARPA funds to to put the, put those solar panels in to save. The city didn't do anything. Now Consumers is coming in and saying, hey, we'll put them in for free, but they got like a shell game of how you pay for it.
Yeah.
Over fifteen years or something like that.
Run your smart meter or thermostat in your house too while they're at it too.
Yeah, anything free is not worth having.
Only city buildings.
Oh.
City Hall, the, this, the.
Okay, this is residential.
It's not residential. So it was very long and boring.
Yeah.
And and it's so like, maybe it may be potentially a good plan. The county uh, didn't get offered that because they already take, taken care of it themselves with ARPA funds. Maybe the county should have waited. I don't know. But I'm sitting there thinking.
Yeah.
You know, after Consumers screwed the city, although the city was screwing.
Right.
Consumers, but they said, you know, we're gonna do our own water at the hydroplant. Now they're coming in, hey, guys, why don't you do, because Consumers isn't doing that out of the goodness of heart. There's something on the backend for them. Nothing's free. Um, but then again, I I guess you gotta look at it, where would we be as a city without consumers' energy?
Yeah, that's. They do supply, how many jobs in downtown? I mean, just.
There wouldn't need be a downtown.
Yeah, would there be a downtown without consumers?
John Wilson's gonna drive, get in his car, drive over here, kick in the door and hit me over the head. Uh, people like that. Uh, Consumers is a corporate, they make me ill. Their politics, their everything, you know, it 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 does. But where would the city of Jackson be without consumers' energy? Be, their corporate headquarters being located here.
Yeah.
I think we'd be in big trouble. I really do.
Yeah.
Uh, there, uh, but yeah, I like how they fight with one another over the years. Um, but anyways, I don't know if you're gonna see solar panels on top of city hall, city-owned buildings or not. The county's doing it. Out to, out Lansing Ave, a friend of the court, the county health department out there.
Close to Ward three. I'll have to drive over there and look.
Uh, across from uh, the parking lot, across from the courthouse and the jail, uh, and the jail, solar panels are going in uh, to off, to help uh, offset the cost of powering those. I guess it'll work. I don't know. I'm not a big solar guy.
Yeah.
I I'm, you know, I, Nick Grasslake's got five hundred acres of solar panels coming in and I'm not too happy about it.
When it comes to farmland, you know how I feel about it.
Trump might have
Yeah.
turned the spigot off.
Yeah.
Cuz they, I noticed they haven't done it yet. Um, well, anyways, if Caleb has his way, you're still gonna be able to flush your toilet and have sewer, um, the lead, lead water supply lines that is mandated by the state.
To get, that needs to be, I think that has a time limit on that too. I think it does.
It was thirty years or something. They shortened it up.
Oh.
So.
So that, that would be on Kathy Schmaltz to try and hurry up, help us out with that then from her perspective.
Gotta get rid of that governor.
Yeah.
And 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 take control of the Senate.
I've been saying that for eight years.
Prior to, you know, this all come about because of the Flint water crisis. And uh, as that was going on, and I remember down to city hall, uh, the city promised that, you know, it isn't, the problem isn't that your water is being delivered through lead service pipes. Um, it's something that happened to this lead service pipes. The water source in Jackson is fabulous, is what they were saying.
I think, I think I would agree with that. Yeah.
Somewhere down the line, it didn't matter. We got it. We gotta replace it.
Right, yeah. It's just the pipes. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not unhappy with the source of the water because.
They haven't replaced yours at your house?
Nope.
Is your wa- do you drink your water?
I do.
You do?
And they get, we get a test in monthly and we get a little letter that says it's still safe for consumption.
Oh, I noticed though, when you walked in the room, you're glowing green a little bit.
Well, you know.
Yeah, well.
And I haven't met your children, but they might be a little off.
All right.
I, you are on my face, but they look like normal kids to me.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Okay, all right, all right. Just wanna make sure.
No.
Drinking that.
It does have a sweet taste to it. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I think, I don't think.
That's the fluoride. It's okay.
I think they, I think they've eliminated fluoride in water. Have they or have they not? I think they, I think they've eliminated fluoride in water. Have they or have they not?
I know that they did. I know Kennedy called for it and I think they're doing it in Utah. I'm not sure if it's in Michigan.
Yeah, I don't think RFK's, uh, made it nationwide yet. He, that's his big push.
I, I will say, I think the city might be behind schedule on replacement of those water lines, but they do have a plan. They're chipping away at it.
But it's, it's not going nearly fast enough and, and that has to do with revenue. I mean, yeah, if we don't have the revenue, we can't do anything.
They call that an unfunded mandate. So the state says, you have to do that. Technically, by law, you can't make an unfunded funded mandate. And at one point, there was a lawsuit that claiming that is an unfunded mandate and I, I think it got squashed.
Yeah, I wonder how, what, what became of that? Did the Supreme, did that go to the Supreme Court of Michigan or how is that would be a?
I don't think Gretchen Whitmer cares. She'll just make an executive order about it and you just gotta figure it out.
She knows the attorney general.
And I tell people, you know, look, hey, you know, we can get these roads fixed, but would you like your lead pipe fixed too? And when I.
People say roads first.
Yeah, I'll buy bottled water.
Yeah, but if they do that, I say, what happens two years from now when they come and dig up that brand new road? And they gotta put in a lead pipe. Well, they should do both. I said, yeah, and guess what? How much more that's gonna cost?
So the city is already, uh, proactive about that. They're gonna go in and do a street assessment. They're doing all the infrastructure and the street.
I like it.
For that reason, Caleb. So we're not gonna come and do your street and, and leave the old pipes.
That's how you end up like Flint and we don't need to.
Lead service pipes, sewer pipes and water, uh, distribution to the lead service. You're gonna, you gotta replace it all.
Yeah, of course.
Now, John has a good point and I'm about this in Leonie. Just go through and mill and pave.
Mill and pave. I, I looked it up and honestly.
That's what they did to your grandma's road on Lansbury, milled and paved.
Yeah, and it's get, it's getting rougher now, but it's still a billion times better.
Like who approves that? Doesn't the city council have to approve the millage before we could, you do that or how does the?
Well, no, they can chip away at it out of their road fund. They have a road fund. But I think the city ultimately is going to ask.
For a millage?
For a millage. You know, the mayor claims all that it would take seventy-five years to, to, uh, fix every road in the city. Even if we had the money right now, you'd never be able to get it done.
There's not enough contractor.
Not at all.
I have heard that the contractors are short. Um, Corey Kennedy.
Pay a little bit more to get United States people to get it. I mean.
No, I think the mayor is over exaggerating.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And then let's go back to John Wilson, mill and pave.
Mill and pave. He's all about the mill and paving. Actually, Corey brought that up in the last episode. That, that the biggest problem is workers is.
That's for the patching, the, the workers for the county road going out and patching.
But I'm, I'm assuming that, that bleeds over.
By the way, Corey didn't bring up that, the county commission did authorize subcontractors. Through the whole winter, it was just, uh, JDOT guys out there patching the holes. And it comes spring, it gets bad.
Yeah.
So they do have subcontractors out, helping them right now do that. I've seen them, uh, personally, um, out doing that. God, they got a lot of work to do though. Hawkins Road, there's. It doesn't, JDOT not drive down Hawkins Road?
I don't think so.
It's kind of a busy road.
Yeah, but it's one of those busy roads.
Find out what grade they put on that road. They put a grade D, grade C. What, anybody know?
Oh, I bet you Hawkins in general probably isn't too bad. It's just a couple of sections.
Okay, so probably wasn't high enough on the list to get.
Some of the nicer roads in the county, one of them, uh, it's a nice road. It's just happened to be one pothole created that was this deep. You never know when they're gonna appear, I guess. I, I don't know. Here's my thing about.
You know when they're gonna appear.
The roads that are really, really bad that you don't like driving down actually have the less deep potholes. They're bumpier and hack. They're, they're not, no fun to drive down. It's, it's the random six inch pothole that, that appears on, on a relatively smooth road that takes your tire out. If you're not, if you're driving down East Washington here in the city, you're going so, I've taken a tire out on East Washington. But you're driving so slow down some potholes that you, you're, you're expecting. Where you're going down a smooth road and all of a sudden some ghost pothole.
Yeah.
Where the water main is at too, if you notice.
Yes, where they.
Notice that?
Where the manhole covers are.
McThurst's, where you guys were at?
Yeah.
It has a big one. Like, there's like that water main and then it's like.
Manhole, manhole covers.
Yeah.
So they don't put goop around them, the, the goop, the goop guys, because you gotta be able to get in the manhole. If you hit a manhole cover, that's got holes. Oh, you're done. That's a problem. You know what gets me on interstates is the way you got two lanes of traffic. It's where they, this lane, they, they paved, then they did this lane. Where they marriage together is where the holes begin. Isn't there a way to just do that as a whole? It's, it's, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not a concrete guy or an asshole guy. It seemed to me there'd be the technology for that. Kevin, how much time we got?
We are out of time, but we need as much time. We're at one hour and forty minutes.
I don't even like it that much, Caleb, to talk to you that long. No, we're not done yet.
All right.
So you and I.
Uh, it's live, so editing isn't.
Went out with Chris Baird, um, and, uh, cut some videos for you, for your camping. And as doing that, we went to Nixon Park. And, uh, and you're, you're, uh, an umpire. Right? Great. I heard they're hard to find.
They are, we're just getting more, fewer of us every year, yeah.
Now you need fewer of you because from what I've just found out is that leagues are dwindling.
They are.
Since COVID. And I did not know Nixon Park only has one ball field anymore.
That wasn't the case before twenty twenty. We had all four most fields they used.
How many fields, how many ball fields were there? There are three.
No, there was, there was four. There's one, two, three, four. It's, there's, yeah, there's, there was four fields.
Not only is there just one.
Yeah.
The ones they closed.
It's an eyesore.
Yeah.
Other eyesores. They can become a hay field for a farmer at this point. It's.
The backdrops are still there, crappy, uh, bleachers. Of weeds growing around them. Uh, the field all grown up. They're not mowing it.
Nope.
Nothing. So.
Costs money.
Okay.
Right, city, city and rats, we have to.
You gotta tear that crap out, go do something. I, I don't wanna bitch about Jackson City parks because we have good parks. We have a lot of parks.
We almost have too many, but yeah.
We have too many and they've taken abandoned corners and named a park after someone all over the place. Matter of fact, you know my name is on a park here in Jackson?
I didn't even know that.
Yes, it is. It's not the Russ Jennings Park. But, uh, years ago, I was on the city of Jackson Human Relations Commission. By the way, that was a great time as a, uh, conservative Republican.
Who, and you were nominated by Derek?
No, Bill George was the mayor at the time.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
I was gone when Derek got elected. Um, but anyways, uh, he didn't remove me. I had to move on. But it was a, a literal bunch. I, I, I did pretty well with it. John Willis was the liaison guy and, and uh, I do not agree with John Willis, but John Willis is a good guy and he, he, he understood where I was coming from. But we approved, gosh, I hardly remember. We approved the recommendation to take a, uh, empty lot, I think it's over here on mechanic, and allow a community garden.
Okay.
And I think it's still down there. And, and they, I heard they've removed it. But they put up a plaque, says thank you to the city of Jackson Human Relations Commission and mentioned all of our names.
All right.
And, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm on a, at a city car.
Somewhere, okay.
But I have said, told that they've taken their sign out of there. But I think it's still down here. It's a little community garden that they got going. Caleb, you wanna say anything else to help you get elected? Cause I am gonna try to get Caleb Blankey elected for city of Jackson Ward Three. Um, I'm in, I already told you that.
Thank you.
I don't know what the Jackson GOP is. That's up to them. That don't mean that I can't, uh, um, try to help as best as I can. And I, and, and people get confused. The Stick to the Plan podcast is not a Jackson GOP podcast. This is Russ and Kevin's podcast. Just like Hits Homes Jackson's, John's Wilson's podcast and, uh, Dave Jones and Chris Baird. Uh, Star Stripes and Straight Talk is theirs. Jackson GOP doesn't have a podcast. Now, me being the chair, I talk a lot about Jackson GOP and I promote a lot of things and they should be thankful for that. I say that for a reason, that I can support Caleb Blankey, doesn't mean that Jackson GOP will or should. As a nonpartisan candidate, maybe you don't want him to be. I get, I get the play. Um, but I have talked to somebody about a fundraiser for you.
All right.
They threw more on my plate and I gotta bring that back up. Um, soon, August will be here before you know it.
Yeah.
But, um, what do you got to say?
Uh, well, basically it shouldn't be red or blue. We need to really start thinking long term about getting money. It's, you know, obviously at the end of the day, the city of Jackson is a business and it needs to be treat, we need to treat it as a business. It's not about a red or blue issue. We need to be seriously thinking about, uh, getting revenue back to the city. We, for, I mean, we were, back in the day, it was almost sixty thousand, you know, that was on the infrastructure for water. You know, that's, that's a selling point we need to get back to. How can we, you know, get, get back, uh, get back our revenue for water? Another thing I was thinking about is just those of you that are living on fixed income, you know, you've already sold, you've already paid off your house. Um, you're probably living on social security. I don't know how you're doing it, to be honest with you, with costs going up. But there's gotta be a way we can figure out something with property taxes that can be capped if you've already paid for your house. At least put a cap on it. That's one thing I'm looking at for ideas in the city. If you are under, if you're, uh, trying to buy a house, I mean, hey, you know, the city, we're, we're competitive with, uh, Blackman and Summit with housing costs. You know, we're willing to, I'd like to see us be able to do a first time home buyer thing and be able, and it's not just a hundred homes. I mean, that's, I, I'm still kinda mixed. I'm still doing my homework on those home, home, hundred homes. But, I mean, there's a lot of people in my neighborhood that are getting older, uh, you know, and they're not getting any younger. And we want to encourage young families to come and buy, come and buy our houses, you know? We, we can, we can compete with Summit, Blackman and all the other townships. And, uh, to be honest with you, you would like our water compared to what your well water is. To be honest with you, I didn't like my well water in the country.
Well, water sucks. I'll take my grandma's well water any day.
I drink my city water. I'm doing okay. And I, I would ask.
City water is actually pretty decent around here.
Yeah, and I, and I would ask for your vote on August fifth. And if you do, I'm going to try and get that revenue boosting back up. I'm gonna fill out work orders for your neighborhood. You got potholes? I'm gonna be the guy writing out a work order for your pothole. And I will submit it to city hall and I will make sure it's being followed up, that that number is being tracked for your potholes. The least I can do besides just filling in, uh, two out of every four months out of the year or two, two weeks out of a month. You know, you're paying ten to twelve thousand dollars for a councilman. Why not me do a little bit more than just show up for a city council meeting, vote yes or no? So that's my plan, filling out work orders, making sure that our water is getting, um, back to the proper infrastructure we used to have. And hey, come buy our homes. We're not, you know, we're, we're, we're more than affordable.
Third Ward.
And we're more, and we are, we are a bunch of quiet citizens. It's beautiful where we're at.
Great neighborhood.
It is beautiful. I mean, I love living over in Orange when I was there.
Yeah, if I was gonna live in the city, uh, it'd be probably Third Ward or.
Well, Six.
Six is different, the district, but you know, west end, but Third Ward would be.
Yeah, I, I would be Third Ward. I, it's, it's, yeah, that's.
We take care of our lawns and on, on L.A., I'll tell you that. We, we take care of our lawns. So.
So vote for Caleb Blankey.
August fifth.
August fifth. Um, you, you just said something, Caleb. I'm gonna throw, uh, Commissioner Kennedy under the bus here.
Rut row.
Um, it's difficult to do. And I think, uh, county commission districts are bigger than a, lot bigger than a city ward. But, uh, commissioners are quick to say, uh, just call JDOT or, or go online. We have a fancy new website.
What if you can't, what if you don't know how to do that?
Put in, put in your pothole concern and there's a way to track it. And I guess that's the difference here. Um, I like the fact that you, you can manage that as a city council person, probably easier than a county commissioner would. I'm not gonna throw Corey under the bus here, but I don't see Corey out there doing any work orders.
No.
Okay, um, so.
That's, that's.
But that's the difference. I, I like that. I haven't heard a candidate or anybody ever say that.
Nope, me neither.
Guess what? I'm your council person. You give me a call directly.
Yeah.
I'll come right out to your house. It might take me a day or two. I'll come right out there, take a look.
Seventy-two hour window guarantee.
Yep.
I will respond back in seventy-two hours.
And track where DPW is. I'm fixing that.
Hey, you guys are a month away. Are we two months away? Where are we at on fixing that pothole from the garbage truck that, that caused it?
And, and, so I apologize comparing a county commission to, you can do that as a city council.
It's not, I could almost walk my, my block, almost walk Ward Three in a day.
Yeah.
I could literally walk around and get it done.
And you're right, uh, if you've got, uh, an aging population, you've got a mixed population, but you got, you know, aging population. They don't know how to go online and do that.
Heck no.
I, I'm old, but not that old and I, I don't even wanna do that.
I, I'd have to do some work to figure it out myself and I'm pretty proficient with the internet.
Now, most people see a pothole and just run to Facebook and bitch about it and never know, never even attempt.
A work order.
To put it, the, the, the app complaining.
Yeah.
They just wanna bitch on Facebook.
Once you put it in a work order, the city has to respond to that.
County does the same thing.
Okay, I didn't know how that works for.
Now, the county has a waiting list. You can watch your.
But you should still be able to track it though, right?
Yeah, you can, but it's, 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 I don't know, their site is, is great, but it also is confusing in a lot of ways.
I think once you started doing it, if you're on there often, I, I go on, the city's got a nice website too.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, so he's got a beautiful.
You get your whole board packet.
Yep.
Uh, the county does that. Leonie now does that because of me. Uh, they would have never done that. But, uh, both, I think the city websites easier to learn. The county though has a nice website. Once you start, oh, routinely looking for the packet or, or the information you routinely, it gets simple. Your first time on your, on there, you're like, board docs, what's this? Uh, you know? But, uh, uh, I gotta give the county and the city, uh, credit where credits do. The information, if you wanna know something, it's there. Leonie Township's the same thing. All you gotta do is, people are always wondering about ordinances. All you gotta do is in your Google search bar, Leonie Township ordinances, you can even be specific to the ordinance you're looking for.
You can type in a keyword.
And it'll pop up.
Yeah.
Parks, parking, weed ordinance. Uh, I meant, when I said weed.
Marijuana.
I meant, I meant lawns. When you say weed, you automatically think marijuana. I meant lawns. But it's, it's all right there. Uh, people are quick just to bitch about it on Facebook or, or not do their own. Listen, as a elected official myself, I'd be happy to help you do that. But you know what? You probably almost shouldn't just take my word for it either.
No.
Read it for yourself.
Go to a meeting.
Yourself.
Go to a meeting even. I mean, if you're really, if you can't find it, go to a meeting, use the public, you know.
Nah, you know, you're not gonna find out much about ordinances.
Yeah, but at least, yeah, you'll at least raise a concern better than Facebook.
Well, if you go to public comments that, hey, I got a problem out here afterwards, someone's gonna go to you or administrator and gonna say, hey, it's right here and this is how you can find it if you wanna know. People do need to know. All right, GOP information, then we're out of here.
Okay, hold, I'll hold the website up so we can just.
Um, bone banking this Wednesday and every Wednesday, um, broken glasses. With AFP, Americans for Prosperity, one of the largest political, conservative political organizations in the nation. Um, has a strong, uh, footprint in Michigan and the Jackson GOP has embraced their help. Um, they are, uh, issues oriented that, uh, is about prosperity. They're not fighting abortion issues. They're not fighting election integrity. They're not fighting second amendment. It's economics, prosperity. That's what they're there for. The issue that they're, uh, fighting for right now is to encourage our. Thousand seventeen Trump tax cuts. If they do not get extended, you're gonna pay a couple thousand dollars more a year in taxes, federal taxes. Uh, that is wrapped up currently in the big, beautiful bill. But, uh, AFP is still making phone calls for that. After that, they have been making calls uh, to bring back, uh, Michigan, uh, right to work. And then another one that I like a lot is the elimination of the state income tax. But those are issues that they're fighting for. Every Wednesday, eleven o'clock, you could just pop into the Jackson GOP office. And, uh, at eleven, we show you how to make these phone calls. You'd call people on the phone and encourage them to call their U.S. senators uh, on those issues. Uh, eleven o'clock till one o'clock, we have a lot of fun doing it. And AFP loves to feed people.
Yeah.
And they feed you lunch afterwards. So we get together. Now you can also, once they show you how to make these calls, you can make these calls anytime you want from the comfort of your home, your office, wherever it is, in the bathroom. But we like to get together as a group and make the calls. So we do that every Wednesday, eleven o'clock and then we feed you. So, see you Wednesday. Uh, we have a precinct delegate meeting this Wednesday at six o'clock. You don't have to be a precinct delegate to attend. If you wanna get involved in the Jackson GOP or as a political, conservative political activist in any way, come to this. It's free to attend. There'll be some munchies out there and water and we have John. come to this. It's free to attend. There'll be some munchies out there and water, and we have John Rutan as a guest speaker. He is a constitutional scholar, teaches the Constitution around the state and and Ohio and Indiana. And then also, there's the flyer. Vice Chair of the, one of many vice chairs of the Michigan GOP, Susan Kokinda will be here. She's been working very hard on a lot of issues. I forget why she's the vice.
Coalitions.
Coalition. So we coal us around Susan Kokinda. But that's free. Six o'clock Wednesday. Come up here in the Trump Room. If you have never seen our beautiful suite, it's a great opportunity to do it. Hang out with some cool people and hear from some good speakers.
Uh huh.
On the twenty sixth, Kevin, we had some seeds of a youth coalition, and we still have a couple of young members. It might be partly my fault. It's we just haven't been able to get our arms around it. I have Turning Point USA has reached out, and that's what they do. Charlie Kirk's main first organization. First, there's Turning Point USA, then there's Turning Point Action. A representative from Turning Point USA will be here June twenty sixth at seven o'clock in the Trump Room to talk about what they can do to get youth involved in conservative politics.
Yes.
So I need people to get their grandkids here, their children here, the neighbor kids here. If there's a conservative streak in them anywhere, get them up here. Turning Point USA is gonna buy some pizza, and they're going to set them on a path of success. And thankfully, because the Jackson GOP just doesn't have the resources to do it properly, plus I'm old. I I don't know. So they'll be here. Please attend that. What the heck does that say? I think, oh, July under the Old Speaker Series is already planned with candidate for U.S. Senate, Mike Rogers. It'll be the same old routine where you pay twelve dollars. You can attend. He'll be here and speak. You can ask questions from six to seven. But we're potentially, it looks this way, another organization or a group of people are going to provide a VIP access prior to that, like five fifteen to six o'clock.
Yeah.
Right here in the Commonwealth Building. So like you pay a scenario. The scenario is that they proposed to me, you pay fifty dollars. Twenty five will go to the Jackson GOP. Twenty five will go to Mike Rogers as a fundraiser, and that would include the VIP access and the.
The Utahs.
Under the Oak Speaker Series. So I'll probably get a little pushback on that. But it's a great way for us to make money, little extra dollars. It is what it is. Mike Rogers, I think that's July tenth. Oh, July sixth is the birth date of the Republican Party.
Yes.
We celebrate it every year. This year falls on the Sunday of Fourth of July. So Fourth of July is on Friday. That's a tough weekend. We will be gathering at the Under the Oaks location, west of downtown for a small celebration of prayer, some words, eat some cupcakes. You can't ignore it. So that celebration is being organized right now for July sixth. It'd be the two hundred and forty ninth anniversary of the Republican Party. That was the birthplace right here in Jackson, Michigan.
Two hundred and forty nine.
Two forty nine, I think. A hundred and forty nine. Next year's the biggie.
Rigs and Tories back then.
Next year's the biggie, one fifty.
One fifty.
That'll be on a mon- that'll be on a Monday. There's no reason not to have a big blowout for that.
Yeah, it's a Monday.
And election year.
Oh, and.
Every elected Republican better be under the Oaks next year.
Yeah.
Or I'm not voting for any of them.
No, none of them.
None of them. I'm gonna turn into a Democrat.
Just won't vote in November.
He'll switch right over. Yeah, thank you, Caleb. We appreciate it.
Probably a good show. You can follow us on Rumble and YouTube Live and Kevin.
YouTube didn't go live today, but that's because YouTube sucks. But I will post on I'll post it back up on YouTube immediately.
But it'll be on YouTube.
I'll I'll reload upload it to YouTube.
I always say, we need likes on our Facebook page.
Yes.
Podcast Facebook page. If we hit a hundred, we can stream live on Facebook.
Yes.
I think we got forty more to go.
Yeah, that's down in the description for that Facebook.
I always say it, Kevin. I only post on there three times a week. I'm not gonna flood your news feed. Please just like it, and then we can go live on.
And I never post on it, so.
You know. That's it. That's all I got.
I'm just double checking. Yeah, we're at forty eight followers, so we need.
Fifty two.
Fifty two.
Caleb, when you get home.
Thank you, Roy Red. Roy Red just threw that up.
Maybe I don't.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay.
Yeah, Roy.
Don't get up yet. We don't want to be like early days of JT V where you just get up. Kevin's gonna, Kevin does something, then he says.
Um, guys, make sure you follow this this stream, like this stream. Follow us on YouTube, too. That'll be up in the next fifteen, twenty minutes. And follow the Facebook. Other than that, you can always donate to the show at kofiKO-FI.com slash STTPod. We appreciate it.
One more quick thing next week. Hopefully, I'll have somebody on here about the negative. There's a rape choice voting.
Right.
Circulating petitions right now. It's a horrible, horrible idea. I'll get somebody on here, hopefully, that can explain it.
All right, that'll be next Monday. So until then, guys, we'll see you next week, and have a good day.